All right, roll call.
Tom Dick Jr.
Here.
Lisa Petrowski.
Here.
Dominic Rivera. James Rola.
Here.
Deborah Marcha.
Here.
Bill Cornrow.
Here.
George Toth. Mayor Margaret Stevick.
Here.
You want a Resolution 778 memo? Resolution 778 memo. Right, it's on the roll call. All right, apologize for that, it was a typo. An executive session was held today at 5:45 PM to discuss personnel matters. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last council meeting, May 19th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens? Comments? Nick?
No.
All right, moving on, Mayor Margaret Stevick.
The Pickens Police worked 229 calls in the month of tonight. We collected $305, five. The rest of those are part of state, nothing from the state, over 32.47 cents. A magistrate, 1,427. County, 34, and Hill College. Sounds like the magistrate is kind of coming into gear.
Yeah, and the other thing with magistrate is Nick won a case for an occupancy that he got about $859. And I want some of your thunder, $839.
You're good.
In back of my bills.
Oh, good.
All right, anything else, Mayor?
No, that ends by report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Personnel in general, since Dominic's not here, I'll read for him. Motion to hire a seasonal public works labor at a rate of $15 per hour?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions on that?
We have anybody?
We had one, one application.
Well, he followed me over here.
I have to call him.
We'll put.
And I want to put an add.
Put an add, ma'am.
You may have to make me $15 flexible depending on experience.
My quote's a minimum.
I would say 18.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a discussion of the bulletproof glass cost estimate.
Yeah, I was asked to get an estimate for bulletproof glass for the eight windows that we cover. Figures for the main office, my office, the chief's office. We got a price of $20,939. One of the things, it's covering so you can open the windows. And the other thing is the person who was part of the office a month ago came in, handed over a payment that was nicely pleasant enough. So I think we're going to have our first, but I don't know if.
If that bulletproof was going to cover the glass, what about those other things I said to you? You said that would also protect it from opening or like that.
It would, you'd have to replace the entire window.
Oh.
With new glass and everything, right?
Yeah.
It was Lexi or whatever.
Yeah. It's more or less a shield. They would put it over, they would frame it, you know, so it matches what's out there.
Are you.
You know, it doesn't guarantee a bullet, it might have a bullet too, from what, you know, from how.
Yeah.
We're kind of boring that.
I would imagine if we were to go with it, like you said, it would probably be triple, if not more, the price of what we got. Like the one, like during the.
Yeah, it's probably something that should have been in the original design.
Right.
I don't know how bullets work, but when they go through the wall, also, like you could take.
The brick, the brick's on the body, so most people, they're not coming with a hard right. I don't know, Scott, you might know better on this hardbacker. If a bullet can penetrate that.
It depends on the color.
Right, like a nine millimeter, I mean, most likely somebody's going to come with a handgun.
Yeah. So let's say before you could send one. Absolutely, like I said, please eliminate mine, I don't need it. I don't buy anything on windows and I've got a gun.
You know, the scary thing is, you wanted to say, you just can't go in for all these terrible things that might happen.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm okay with it, I don't need.
Was there bulletproof glass in some areas when the building was built?
The only one that is, is our window in the front office.
We were, we.
I thought there was something.
We added one in the end.
You know, if I do do a threat assessment over there, you would probably cost you a million dollars. I'm not doing that, like I do at schools.
I don't, I don't remember if the.
You know the window I'm talking about?
Yeah, when Homeland Security did a threat assessment, I don't know when he, I have to go back to his report. I don't know.
That you do? Can't shoot, can't see, tent window.
I was just going to say that, why would we tint them?
I thought $100, can't see.
Because then you can still open them when you want to.
All right, so we can table the bulletproof glass estimate and just look into window tinting instead? All right, that's all I have under personnel in general. We're going to move on to streets, George Toth. I guess I'll read for him too. Can I get a motion to approve a handicap parking spot in front of 418 Agatha Street?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, can I have a motion to approve for 2025, awarding the 2025 project to low bidder A Liberoni Incorporated?
To make that motion?
Motion made and seconded, any questions?
Can you just tell everybody what section the road is?
Mr. Don?
That's for Britton Avenue, so it's the next section down from where we stopped, maybe before, and it goes to the intersection.
Now, that's just that whole intersection there, right?
Yeah, were we talking about Britton Avenue?
The pavement, the whole pavement.
I thought you were talking about Britton Avenue.
The street's in the pavement.
So Liberoni is Center Avenue, Merchants Alley, Highland Avenue, Third Street to the intersection of Highland Avenue, 11th Street, and the school street. So, yeah, it worked out really well, I mean, it came in a little bit under, I just remember the way we got it out was we had a base bid, and I knew your budget was around $160,000. So the base bid came in at $139,000, and the alternate was stole, which brings us up to $163,000. It's a good price, now, if I are you, not my money, but I approve.
I'm spending that right now.
Only any more content next week.
Right. And we're going to do Center Avenue all the way up to Bulwark?
Any other questions on the paving project? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 5, 2025, awarding Foligno Construction the Britton Avenue 11th Street Reconstruction Grant Project? That is what Don was talking about. Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is all I have under streets, parks and recreation, Lisa.
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to allow the Gateway School District to use the Park Building to provide free lunches for children under the age of 18, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday to Thursday, from June 17th to August 7th, the lunches must be eaten on site.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow Gateway with the free lunch program. Any questions?
Yeah, will be crossing guards there?
We haven't done crossing guards in the last.
Pardon?
We haven't done them in the last couple of years.
We haven't had them in the last few years, she said.
You know, we had that one get it by the bus.
We can certainly put it out there maybe and see who would be interested in.
I don't think that pedestrian crossing does too good in the.
No, that crosswalk is horrible. Horrible, horrible.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One other, well, two other things technically. So I'm putting out some fillers on a few things, I feel like we're not really doing anything as far as park and rec in the summer, and I feel like that's on my shoulders because I feel like with park and rec, it's summer, we should be doing something, right? So I'm trying to see about maybe putting a basketball court in again. I've got to first see if there's an interest, so I'm going to come down and try to talk to some of these kids that visit the basketball courts, if they even want to talk to me. See if I can maybe get something put together for that, so that's just throwing that out there right now. And I did just put a message on Facebook today on the night market, thank you, night market page, seeing if anybody's interested in doing the fall night market and potentially maybe trying a Thursday at this time, because Fridays in September are football games, so. Just some information, no, no results at the moment, but just some feelers, so that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Finance and Economic Development, Bill.
Motion to pay bills as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pay the bills, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to continue using the services of Muck and Hop Benefits Group and Tacker Shore. Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Bill. Health and Welfare, Deb.
Thank you. Before I read this sentence, I just want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, the DPW, Mick Turner, other residents that just pitched in during the past Friday night with the severe rains and the impact it has had. Our DPW has really gone up and above, and so has these guys, the fire crews, from going up and pumping. So again, I just want to acknowledge that their work is very appreciative. All right, the only thing I ask is that Mr. Turner submitted his reports to council and might look the glory of Nick winning that settlement, and that is the end of, the other part I did want to say is that multiple we are seeing, Nick is seeing, we are seeing, this high grass. He made, he has cited, I call him, he's like, I just cited them again, we are citing them, and what happens? I don't know, stop me if I'm wrong in citing this. He cites them, these people, wait and wait and wait until it goes to court. And then once it goes to court, if the magistrate decides to penalize them, then that happens, but the second, the day before it gets to the magistrate, they cut it. And then it's taken away, so it's not that we're not trying, and if we get our DPW, who's super busy, we've got bridges and stuff that they need to do. If they, if they cut it, we don't get refunded. The people, they'll wait till they get to the magistrate and everything's gone. So in essence, it looks horrible, it really does, I can't stand it because I called Nick about a couple places, and then he says, this is when it's the magistrate, five to one by the time it gets there, it's going to be cut. Is this not correct?
Yeah.
Nick, what is our citation for high grass?
So the citation is $500, not, not less than $500, not more than $1,000. So Jeff Herbst cites about $500, and then it goes from there. So, and then, I, honestly, at this point, I don't know if we can, but maybe raising those court fees or court fines at some point.
I think we need to, we'll do all our fees, all our, either our electrical turn on, if you call Duquesne Light, if you're a Duquesne Light customer, if your lights get cut off, it's almost $200 to get turned on. And I think ours is at 25.
25.
We, we should be at at least $100.
We can look into, we can look into the different fees.
And definitely all, all the occupation.
That's a good suggestion.
There's no, no doubt, I mean, people laugh at our fees, they, yeah.
Right.
All right, anything else, Deb?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, electric, myself. Excuse me. Motion to designate Mike Bolinborough manager and myself as PJM authorized representatives?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions?
Is that the power?
Yeah, it's the grid. Which ADP, can we purchase a power, it pretty much handles everything, but they still need to have a contact, and they just sent me all the documents that have it.
Pleasure.
Thanks.
Got a tickle in your neck?
Yeah. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. Public Safety, Jim.
Public Safety, I'd like to make a motion to hire Tyler Coewall, who is a part-time police officer based on the chief's recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd also like to make a motion to appoint Sharon Jackson as interim sergeant. He must complete or have started civil service testing for promotion of sergeant by December 31st, 2025. Failure to do so will terminate his appointment as interim sergeant.
Motion?
Second.
Made and seconded, any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Why is he being allowed, I'm sorry, why is he being allowed for it to be either completed or started? I feel like it needs to be one or the other, he needs to either have completed it or started it, but not both.
I'm going to have to do it, and I have a busy summer. Let's say started by December, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put the verb.
Because last time we put, it had to be completed by.
Yeah, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, he just has to have it, he has to have it done within a year, right?
That's what we did, actually, we gave Bob Ross nine months of us, May last year, left in April this year.
Yeah, so this would be a shorter timeframe, so do we want to either change the date and make it longer? Because I would like it to be worded one way or the other, I'm sorry.
No, you're, that's my question. I would say maybe within, you know, I mean, within one year from appointment.
So can we amend this to that? Change the amount of time and say it has to be completed by a different date?
The wording of the appointment.
Do you have to make a motion to amend?
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion.
Yeah, no.
Have it made as he must complete the civil service testing for promotion of sergeant by, what is nine months from now?
Yeah, I want to.
What year?
One year.
One year, okay.
It'll be June 9th, 2026.
By one year from today.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to amend the motion of interim sergeant to be completed for the promotion by one year's time. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well, I think since this is Veterans Month, I'd like to thank all veterans for their service.
You would have to make the new motion.
You are done?
You have to make the amended motion.
To thank them?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you made the amendment.
I made the amendment, but now you have to.
You have to make the motion again.
Okay.
With the new details.
With the new.
Yeah, it's all, it's all for valid, but you have to.
By one year.
Do, do.
I'd like to make a motion to promote Sharon Jackson as interim sergeant. He must complete the service testing for promotion of sergeant by June.
9th.
9th, 2026. Failure to do so will terminate his appointment as interim sergeant.
Motion?
Second.
Seconded, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we thank the veterans.
Thank you. That was done when Chief did it.
No, no, you're good.
Like I say, I'd like to thank all veterans for their service since it's his Veterans Month. That's it.
All right, Solicitor.
Solicitor's office has not been reported.
Engineer.
I appreciate you talked about the two dating programs, and like I said, I think they're good to hit, both contractors have worked in the borough before, so we've had success with both of them. We have several projects we're working on, Highland Avenue Sanitary Service has been on here for a couple of years now, we're ready to bid that out, so I would recommend you guys talk with us to bid it out, we can have it bid out by the time we go to next month.
Dominic, you have a question about that, was there any sliding on the hillside that would affect where that was supposed to go and or the other way around, where it's supposed to go could potentially cause landslides?
Yeah, now, the way we're designing it is certainly if there's a catastrophic landslide, it's going to affect the sanitary sewer, that could happen. But we're prepared to put the sanitary sewer where it is now. And if there's a slide, the brakes are zero, we'll fix it. But other than that, so is it okay if I bid out the.
Please.
Yes.
Other than that, we have several grant applications out, we're waiting to hear back on seven of them, and we got two more due on July 31st, so there's a lot going on, as you know. Any questions on anything on their.
Anything with the grant back here, behind the building?
The park improvement, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're getting close to bidding that as well, I was going to bid the sanitary sewers first this month, and we'll probably, the sports complex will probably be a month behind that.
I knew Dan wants to have a means, everybody, to finalize the, finalize the plan, make sure there's nothing else.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Again, you guys, anything, you wanted to wait until the super project was bid out?
Yep. Yeah, because we've all talked about, you know, the sports complex and various levels, but just to get a little paper, find out, and make sure we connect with everybody on the same page, which I think we are, we may have some new ideas based on what you've seen in the last year or so.
We can make that on a Monday when I'm off, or a weekend.
Monday's, Monday's good. I don't want to have to come in on a week.
Yeah, I mean.
What's the price on the weekend?
Anything, any, yeah, right, anything else on their engineer's report?
Any questions about anything?
That's big, up on 11th, we'll be. Okay.
All right.
Yeah, it seems to be handling ours.
Yeah, Borough Manager's Report.
I'm going to, you, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Smith called me last week and had some questions about setting up some tables and a tent for a ministry, and he told me he wasn't sure he was going to make it because his daughters had danced, but he did show up late, so he didn't have time to sign, so I'd like to allow him to speak on behalf of the ministry to see if everything's set and something up.
Yeah, you can, you can let us know what you're doing?
Okay, so my wife and I started the Highways and Hedges Ministry, it's based off of, I have many years of motorcycle ministry with the Christian Motorcyclist Association, and that's worldwide, but I've branched off from them since 2018. But I've been involved in prison ministry for 17 years, and, you know, just like to reach out to people who maybe sometimes wouldn't normally go to a church building. So we've joined forces, my wife and I have joined forces with the Free and Deed Ministry, who has set up at McKee Sport, Wilkinsburg, Clare Ridge, again, McKee Sport, a couple of different places there. But I'd just like to have a spot or a day, you know, for a few hours, maybe once a month. Looking to set up an easy out with a couple of tables, play a little music, we have like a little loudspeaker thing, it's not ridiculously loud, but just play a little music, kind of set the atmosphere, and offer some free hamburgers and hot dogs to people, and then we have a trailer we pull, and we have a whole bunch of like big Tupperware bins full of clothes. We have several church volunteers to help us, so just come and show the love of God.
What churches is affiliated with?
Primarily, it's House of Faith out of West Newton.
Are you looking to set up in the same spot repetitively or different spots? Do you have something in mind as far as that goes?
Well, my wife and I were just at a birthday party in a church like right up the road from here, I think it was Methodist Church, but when we left, we come down, and then there was like an empty lot right there, and there was a bunch of kids playing. And it's like right over here, like a block away, but either there or maybe back here somewhere, but like once a month.
And you would need electricity?
We have our own generator.
Do you have an idea of like what day that would be? Because like if you used, back here, there's different activities that happen on this field, and I don't want, you know, overlap with a bunch of, you know, like, inventory of space and.
Right, well, we're looking now, if we can, July 12th, I believe, is the second Saturday of the month, and then like thereafter, obviously with your permission, the first Saturday of every month, until probably October would be our last one for this year.
In a time of our estimate?
We're thinking probably 11 until 3.
I know the girls, the girls are playing, they're normally playing in the evenings around 6:00.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I don't know, I don't think we've really got very many bill applications.
If you don't have anybody on Saturdays, I mean, I can give you the application for Saturday if you want to have it back here.
I will say though, we are, we were just talking about, we are redoing this whole parking lot back here at some time, like, we're not bidding on it till next month, like you said, but I just don't know how that's going to work out when, when that happens, or maybe we could just move it to the other side of the field, we'll figure something out for you, we're just, we're just saying, there might be some, some hoops to jump through down the line.
We really don't take up much room, it's just, you know, a church van, pulling a small trailer, and then an easy out.
Probably once the firemen.
Fireman's Carnival is July 29th through August 2nd, so that, that Saturday would be, that field would be packed with rides and everything like that, but you'd be certainly welcome to have a table at the carnival, so.
Great, yeah, I would appreciate that.
He's the guy to talk to.
That's the only event that I know of that would interfere on any Saturdays.
See, I'll wait to the end of the meeting, I'll give you the application, you can sit back a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now Borough Manager's Report.
All right, real estate tax collected in May was $87,553 that they're going to start rolling in here shortly. Year-to-date financial reports were submitted to council, our capital improvement account has $336,639. Electric system capital is $154,870. Liquid fuels has $62,075. Local dirty camp run has $72,766. The super capital improvement fund has $902,000. Public safety has $79,984. The bond repayment fund is $337,633. The park and rec account has $2,241. A $100,000 grant that we received in '22, I think it was, 12/22, that we used to tear down 12th Street, 65 to 12th, 721, 23K, Eleanor, and when we used the remaining of the funds to take out the tanks in 120 Mall. I completed the closeout report, everything came, I haven't gotten the final report yet, but everything is good. The Clean Air Grant, I've submitted everything, all the invoices, we have all the equipment, we gave them the list of the equipment we're destroying, they're in, I have not received that money yet. Dirty Camp Run, Century Engineering is starting to prepare their contract for us, and they're planning to update all the evens to move forward with that. And that's it, other than, you know, our guys were out Saturday, everybody was out Saturday, all five. Jim, Mark, and Ray came out Sunday on Center Avenue. And then today, at the end of the day, they stayed until almost 5:30 to clean up a tree on Center Avenue, so they deserve some dry weather and some time off.
We do need to discuss another tree on Center Avenue, though.
Well, we were, we were talking about it this morning, that's the crazy thing, we had a discussion over it this morning, and Jim literally drove down Center Avenue and called me and told me that he thinks he can get 50% of the trees, and then he probably has to.
That one big one's ready.
has to pay somebody to do the rest. And then, lo and behold, the tree fell down, so.
Second one in two days, so.
Yeah, and then, you know, I don't want to leave the police out because they do do a little bit of stuff around here. And if you want to know the good job chief's doing, just ask him. And that's it.
Mike, the dumpsters, I didn't bring that up. Are we going to be able...
I ordered, I ordered to, I do have them coming to the center. I think maybe I should divert one to that vacant lot on Wall Avenue because we do own that, I mean, it's totally east of the address. Because a lot of people on North Avenue, that's where, that's where it needs to be.
One in North Big Karen, one in Lower Big Karen.
Yeah. I just have to email them that I'm going to go over there tomorrow.
It'll be tomorrow then?
That's what they told me, they said they were going to try to get them here tomorrow.
Citizens will be happy because I was getting questions as we were pumping basements out with the fire department of when's the dumpsters coming? And I said, I can't, I don't know, I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, they, they didn't promise tomorrow, they said they're going to try tomorrow and I just don't want to say tomorrow when they don't show up, you know how that always goes.
In the coming days.
And also again, if you don't have Facebook and you happen to watch this on the YouTube whenever it gets uploaded, please contact Nick at his work cell. What is that again, 412?
419, 5877.
5877, let him know if you need a kit or any assistance. He did reach out, we're trying to get, besides Lisa helping and cleaning out elderly and disabled people, please reach out to Nick if you need some assistance in cleaning your basement from the flood.
Follow-up.
Okay.
Are we going to try, is your goal to try to put together a volunteer group to do this or what?
So the Red Cross contacted me today with the VOAD and the VOAD is reaching out to their volunteers to see if they can find volunteers to come out and clean like elderly's people's homes. And today I only had found one, I went door to door on Wall Avenue and North Avenue. Everybody seemed to have all their basements pretty much cleaned up, so we only have that one.
Can we maybe add that to the Facebook post that says, you know, like if anybody is willing to volunteer?
Sure.
So just write it on there because, I mean, I'll go back out again, I'll go out every day, I mean, I feel helpless watching all these people with their houses flooded and I'm not doing anything, so I'm more than happy to help.
Yeah, the dumpsters will be supplied, but we will not be going around with any type of vehicle. You will have to get your own truck, sorry to say, and take it to the, or the dumpsters with that, but they will be available and I'll let everybody know on Facebook as soon as they are in.
All right, thank you. Police Chief report.
I do want to thank the fire department, street department, and like, because I was trying, doing my best when my phone was working the other day to get in touch with Mike. It was like in and out, but sometimes it went in, sometimes it didn't. Sometimes you got pictures of my smiling face, then you got pictures of trees. So I do want to commend everybody that, thank you. I also want to tell everybody I'll be gone from June 24th to June 29th. I, Sharon will be in charge. I will not be able to answer my phone. I will be in the foothills of West Virginia in Grafton. We do night training, we sleep during the day. It's an apprehension, troweling, manning with the dog for five days and it's on the national cert, so I wanted to remind everybody I will not be here from 24th to the 29th. Also, I was voluntold that I'm going to be doing a K night demo at the fireman break home.
Did you just say voluntold?
I'm going to do a K night demo on apprehension detection and article finds and such and missing children, I'm going to show them how we find your children if they come up missing. We're going to be using a bird ball field, so I'll have to arrange like the fire department because these fields are going to be taken. And I believe that is all. What? Well, I'm, yeah, because I'm exploring the opportunities for dispatch between, you know, pros and cons between rural versus county and I'm exploring the options and the considerations on being dispatched through the county, what?
I said hi, Don.
Oh, okay, well, I, but anyways, I'm going to go back with the office. But anyways, I'm done, I'm done.
You good?
Yeah.
All right, I just want to give everybody a brief synopsis. Just so everybody's aware, the fire department usually runs about 250 calls a year. They're almost to that point halfway through the year, so that's how busy the fire department has been this year. We are just, we're getting around 200 calls, something like that. So we're probably going to run over 400 calls this year, it sounds like, just so everybody's aware of how busy they've been running and we thank you for your support.
I would like to know, really, you could have realized how fortunate, any municipality that has a volunteer fire department?
Right, yeah, you're absolutely right and I...
I don't know that donations really are that truthful.
They're not, our return rate's like less than 13% on solicitation, so.
And that's really sad because all these people that were pumped up, I mean...
Right.
I was one of them.
And I also wanted to make mention that the county with Michelle Chappas, we're having, there's a lot of meetings going on right now with fire companies in the county all around on possible, something that they can do for paid staffing throughout the whole county. So when these talks get, come to us, we should be with open arms because you never know when the volunteers are just not going to be there. So there's a lot, lot of things in the works, I can't go into detail because it's not final, but Michelle is working on it hard for us and everybody else in the county. adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn second and any questions? Comments, concerns, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Well, I'm not traveling a new road for a while with these trees hanging over.
Please don't...
There's realists that fill the bucket because, you know, a lot of people are doing things about these guys and they're already tired of already talking about track. So, yeah, right, so a lot of these, a lot of these, I don't know.
So they wouldn't fit down a half a ton. So they have board trucks? They do us, Shell, Shell, Swiss Phil, so. One thing they do, I just saw this one. Or maybe they drop less, I just want to say, what is it?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't like...
I know you don't want to hear that. Hopefully, it's all about it.
You're supposed to get a little right now.
Yeah. That's good, that's good to know, you'll be dying there.
Paul's living in Tringill, it sounds like he's a business.
It's different, I would have never got it, I know he was telling me that they filmed the movie, long-term movies or something.
I'm going to be going.
I appreciate the stop and hopefully it's successful for you. I don't know if I introduce myself, but I'm probably the president of the county. I'm mostly the assistant fire sergeant.
Who are you?
I have a question for you.
We appreciate your...
Do you have any recommendations?
Updates on everything.
Life is that way.
Yeah, right. You too, man, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll be out. You know, so she's like my daughter's best friend, so I'm just trying to like, whatever. She says to me, she's like, "Get out of my room."
got lots of different rooms.[1261.12]